Planning Board, September 11th, 2019. We have a quorum. We have John, Sarah, Jim, Barbara, and myself. Excuse me. Thank you. So we have a quorum. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? There being none. Are there any? I see there are citizenry here. Are there any citizen comments not associated with the pre-application for the AD Gray School? Okay. There being no citizen comments. Onto new business. There are no site plan reviews for tonight, so we'll jump right to the pre-app for 56 School Street. Please. Please introduce yourself now that we're on the clock here.
I'm Tim Wells, and I'm looking at developing the AD Gray School. And so that's, of course, why I'm here. As you know, I've just put together a little presentation. Did you sort of want to set the, sort of structure the discussion?
So, I don't think it's unknown knowledge that AD Gray has been available for some time, and that kind of been looking for someone to take ownership of it and to develop it for the use that's allowed in that village area. Tim and Ron have met with the Select Board already. We also, we already have two, I hear, Bob, the Chair, and Jan Minzy. And along with the Select Board, they've been meeting with a smaller ad hoc group that consists of, I think all the members were here. The only exclusion is Julie, but she had other business to tend to. And it was suggested that Tim come to the Planning Board for a pre-application to get, so that you're more familiar with this project, and to see if you have any comments or questions or concerns that you want to raise after at least giving the presentation.
Mm-hmm.
A pre-application is not meant to be a, we'll give approval if you do this. It's supposed to just be you being aware of this project, and if you see any serious concerns, now would be the time to bring it up. But I think, Tim, you said this wouldn't be an application until maybe next year or sometime down the road.
It'll be some, quite, yeah, it'll be down the road, yes. But there's a lot of work to be done.
Yeah. So that's all I had unless anyone from the AD Gray group wants to say anything.
And this ad hoc group is whom?
Everyone you see in that audience right there.
Okay. And...
I don't know some of these folks. I'm Bruce Metrick, just live in South Waldboro.
Okay. So these are just interested parties that are...
No, it's a, it's a subcommittee of the Select Board.
But not, not Select Board members? Just a subcommittee created by the Select Board?
Well, two of us are Select Board members and two of us are not.
Okay. It's pretty damp in here. I know. Yeah, it's... Okay. Okay, Tim?
So, we're looking at a mixed-use development, done over phases. But the first phase and what we're really paying attention to tonight is really the AD Gray School. Obviously, it's, the Waldboro, and the AD Gray School would be, will be residential. The, the other phases of the project, which I have to plan for now, will happen, but they're not, they require a lot of work, a lot of economic development work, a lot of coordination with the state and other agencies to make happen. So I'm just sort of prefacing that now. Some of the names we've, we've, and I'll, and I'll take you through this in this sort of two different parts, but Waldboro Heights and Meeting House Hill are both kind of names for, for this development. Okay. So some of the benefits just of this project, you know, the main goal is to bring more people to Waldboro, to offer some different types of housing for residents. And really, repurposing the AD Gray School into condominiums brings a different kind of living that's not really very available on the midcoast anywhere. And that school is, I know people have different opinions about it, but it's built like a horse. So it has value. And when I heard that it may be torn down, I said, geez, that's, that would be horrible. I'd be kind of, I'd tragedy. So, you know, I thought, there has to be some way to repurpose this building. And, and then I went in the building. I got, Max took me in the building, and you see the big, big windows and the natural light coming in. And you, you know, I, you know, lights went off in my head that said, geez, you could really make some great living spaces out of these. Now, there are other, you know, there's, there's other issues. It's an older building. There's a lot of things that you don't know about older buildings. But, you know, I coordinated with some of the people that worked on the Y Project, who have, the, who have looked at the building, structural engineer, for instance, and, and verified that, you know, the building is in good shape structurally. So that opened up, you know, I started to think about it, and that started to open up new avenues of thinking about what this project could be. But basically, I said, wow, you know, you've got, and when I came to Waldboro, I said, who would know that this, that downtown exists? That it's a beautiful downtown, actually. There's great architecture in town. There's beautiful homes in town. And why don't more people know it? Because, of course, they whip down Route One, and they don't get off and see, see the downtown. But I think there's a lot of strengths that can be, that can be further strengthened or reinforced through a project like this by bringing more people in who spend money in downtown, who live there and want to call Waldboro home. So it can, I, I, I think also, it can, it can maybe attract a whole group of people across many varied ages. I think this would be appealing to young people, to middle-aged people, and to older people. As business is going to grow in Waldboro, and as you work on economic development and creating jobs, which are going to attract people, you have to have a workforce. And a workforce doesn't come to an area unless it has housing. Housing always, if you look around at states that are growing or communities, cities that are growing, housing comes first. Businesses don't move someplace unless there's a workforce. And a workforce isn't someplace unless they have a place to live. So, you know, with the chicken or the egg thing, you need housing. And then I started investigating and looking around, and Jan helped me some with this, too. But there's really a lack of housing on, on the midcoast. It's just a shortage. There's a shortage of housing everywhere, affordable housing certainly. But there's just a shortage of housing. If you want to rent along the midcoast, there are very few options. And so I started speaking to different people and realizing that people are really, from 40 or 50 miles, are looking, just trying to find a place and driving to work that they can afford and that they desire to live in. So there's that, there's that shortage also. The other piece of this on, in the design is that we're looking at creating a building that's very highly energy efficient. So the reason why that is, that increases initial costs. But it, what it does is it mitigates the living cost for people choosing to live in the building. Because if oil spikes, energy goes up, things like that, they don't have to worry about it. They don't have to, you know, their energy usage will not go up a lot because it'll be so, you know, energy efficient. And that's really, really important, especially for the state of Maine, where we just don't have, our wages are not equal to other areas of the country. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of different things that I see that this project can help in the community and in the region, and that interests me in trying to do it. So that's, that's sort of some of the things, the benefits of the project. So as we were going through this with the town and looking at zoning, we realized that there's, what I, what my vision is for this requires some variances. So one, you know, this is a mixed-use, multifamily subdivision. So that has to go through approval. And then we have variances on height setbacks and density. And so one of the options that we're looking at, and it depends, of course, upon how many people want to buy units in, how many people want to live in the AD Gray School, is that structurally it'll support increasing it by two floors. And so I'm asking for a 23-foot increase over the existing structure. I may not need a full 23 feet, but since I don't have the design laid out with mechanicals, floor-to-floor heights aren't set yet. So that's why I picked 23 feet. Setbacks, the town requires a 25-foot setback from the road. We've got a different use. Obviously, AD Gray is 12 feet from the road. And on the other side of that development, where you, I'll, you'll see later in this presentation, the building would probably be closer to the road than 23 feet. And so I'd need that variance.
Excuse me. It is now, or you would be modifying the building that would make it larger? I'm trying, just want to make sure I understand. Because if...
We will not be, I will not be building it any closer to the road.
Okay.
Except for landscaping, like, you know, a patio or something for people, but...
So that setback, that setback variance is the existing building, not...
Correct. Well, that's one piece of it. And then on, on the other side of the road, where we may build, you'll see, we're thinking about building something for the theater. That would be closer than 25 feet to the road.
Okay.
And, and depending on what's considered side and rear, it may be closer than the 15-foot setback requirement. So I may need a, on setbacks, I may need those two, two variances. Currently, each dwelling unit has to, is supposed to have 5,000 square feet. So I'll go through this in a little more detail, so this is understood better. But I'm asking for 500 square feet per unit. Which, which sounds like a lot, but it's, it's not as much as it is, as it sounds. And I'll go through why that is.
Tim, so just to clarify, the multi-use is not to do with Phase 1. It's to do with your future phases, because Phase 1 is strictly residential.
Correct.
Tim, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but when you say multi-use, are people going to buy the condo, or they rent them? Or is there any allowance for, say, low-income people, or how does that whole, how does that work?
The, I am not applying for any HUD funds, any federal funding for the AD Gray School.
Yes.
Okay. So these would be purchased, and then it would be managed by a condominium association, and the people that buy would be, would manage that housing unit.
Yep.
So the residents of the, of the AD Gray School would manage the, the property. So this, this is the current map plot of U462, Lot 62 and 63. And this side of the lot also belongs to 63. And this is where we would look at putting some housing for theater personnel, that type of stuff, over here. And, of course, the school, you know, is basically here. So, you know, you've got 422 feet along here, along the ball field. This is 390, 444 feet right where the driveway is, is in the lot. And you've got about 220 feet, 420 feet road frontage, approximately. And so that's 4.65 acres. Yeah. So, what's that, about 180,000 square feet or so?
He's looking at you, Max.
Yeah, I know.
Why?
It's more, 160, yeah, it's about 180, 44,000 square feet per acre. And so it's, it's about 180,000 square feet. So this gives you a better visual of the lot boundaries, of course excluding that. So... And that, just, it's a little off course, but it's interesting that this side of the road is included in that.
Well, it's not much of a road.
Now, as this is finished, this is part of the reason why I'm asking for 500 square foot per unit, which sounds like a big deal, is because I'm taking the square footage out of these areas, which are the biggest areas. So when I cut this off, because if I do other phases, this has to be its own condo association. You see? And that's about 18,000 to 20,000 square feet. And then, because if other phases, they will share this road, they'll share this area, and they'll have to share the cost, the burden of those costs of ma, of maintenance for that area, and that has to be split between the different units. So it has to be its own separate lot, and that's part of the subdivision. So this here would be landscaped gardens, still be able to be used, you know, by the community for different events, et cetera.
Excuse me. If, if, John, I understand this correctly. If you, you're asking for the 500, because if you take the square footage of the lot that is the 21 to 27 units, that's what you get. Is that what you're saying?
And that's what you want to push for in the other two, Phase 2 and 3, the density.
But is the shared, the shared common space that you're talking about, in those other two, those other two lots, are they shared common space between that and the residential office in perpetuity? Is that the plan?
Yes.
Because most shared space subdivisions, you count that shared space in the square footage allotment. So if you do that, what do you get?
It, it depends on, on how you calculate. Different municipalities do it differently. So that's, that's, I, I want to make sure technically we, you know, it's handled properly. Yeah.
I understand, but, but if, I'm just trying to understand what the number would be if you counted the shared space, and then...
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
But it'd probably be like, if, if we include the shared space, it'd probably be 12,000 to 1500.
So it still doesn't get to the 5,000 square?
Oh, no, not even close.
Okay.
Not even close. So there'd still be a variance.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the, the, I'm just trying to understand going forward, that that variance, I mean, if we gave you a variance to the shared space square footage, which is 1,200, as opposed to the 500, that would sort of embed not taking that shared space and putting condos on that?
Correct.
So...
Correct. Technically, we could, we could work it out to make sure that that's not exceeded, so that there's a limitation on that.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's, that's just that, I'm not saying that that's where we would go, but I'm just saying that might, that...
It really is just the language that's built around it.
Okay.
And that can be done in many ways.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the people in the AD Gray building, at those number of units, are 50-plus cars. Where, where, they're not parking on their own property? I mean, is that a, where are those cars going?
It would be, they'd be, they'd be shared parking. And so on the phases, initially, there'd be nothing here, so they, you know, I would look at using this. I mean, I'm investigating even if I could do something with, you know, with a structure that has solar panels on it, and the solar panels act as the roof, like carports, but at the same time, it's producing energy. And so you're using that land well. And I'd use the roof for solar panels also.
But ultimately, all the, all the parking for everything, you know, things move along, is going to be over to the right in Phase 3? Is that what I'm reading here, in the Phase 3 with parking? On your plan?
There's, yeah, there's part under, there's parking underneath this. Yeah. Here. So...
But that would be for that development, correct?
Actually, it'd be shared. And there's different time-of-day usage, and also, we're hoping that, we're hoping that we're not attracting everyone with two cars.
This is America. So, okay, never mind.
I was going to say, you take, now, I shoot baskets on those little basketball rim, believe it or not.
Do you break the windows?
No, but I'll tell you what, it's still got a hoop, but... So, and there was a tennis court, so do you just, when you, the deal you're going to make, would you just kind of dig those up or excavate them? Or how do you just go about, because that's all like concreter, isn't it, that, the courts?
Yeah, actually, this is advantageous. It's a, that, that right there is what we call a perfect parking tray.
Okay.
And the dimensions aren't literally exactly for a parking tray that you'd put under a building. And then the ground's already compacted.
Right.
Because it's been done. Now, these were, the town got a federal grant to build these.
Right.
And so I will pay out that grant to build something someplace else. Yeah.
You know, and about the dozen times I've been down there, there's not been a soul ever used that, those tennis courts?
Well, they put in a new sewer line also, and they dug right across the court.
Right.
Huh.
And so there's this huge bump in it.
Don't they have to pay the federal grant, then? Seems like they're kind of ruined.
Yeah. But, but we're looking, I mean, there, this is, you know, Ted is very sensitive about this. He really wants those tennis courts. And I can understand, you know, as a public use, that it's, it's, it is a resource. People don't use it. If, 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 if there was a court, maybe not two, but if there was one court that was good, would people use it? If it was usable, would, would they use it? And so, you know, that, that, you know, we can investigate that and talk with the town about it, but...
Tim, excuse me. What height is the AD Gray building now?
You know, I don't know. In fact, I'm going to get on, I'm going to measure it, but on one of the surveys, it says it's 34 feet. And then there's, but, but there's, there's parapets on it, right, that are, are two feet high or so, two and a half feet high. And so I don't know the exact elevations, because I also don't know the exact structure of the roof. And we're looking at, at, on this, we're investigating using what's called CLT, cross-laminated timber. And the, the reason why, you know, the Great Northern Paper that shut down in Melanoke, two CLT plants are going to open there, and they were supposed to open, be open already. And when I started looking at this, I wanted to help push that economic development in Maine and be one of the first projects in Maine using that. I think we still will be one of the first projects in Maine, and I think we'll get regional attention, maybe even national attention for this project. But, but we may have to source it from Quebec now, because Great Northern Paper didn't pay $5 million in taxes, and there was this holdup that stopped these plans from opening that have been, they've held, been held up for a few years, unfortunately. But it still will help them, because, you know, we will be one of the first projects, and that will help get things rolling for these plans that create jobs in Maine. And so that's, that's part of the thinking. And so, but my point about that is that how we hook that to the top of the roof, or whether we sink it down in, we're not there yet, because of structural, we have to sort of tear the building back and, and understand what the loads, structural loads are in that design. So it may not be 23 feet, because it may go down to where the roof is now, or depending on what we want to do on the interiors, we may put it across.
Right.
And so we have to see how we're going to do that.
I'd be curious at, well, let's say it, it might be 34 feet, plus another two stories. Let's say it's another 20 feet, 54 feet on a hill. What's the next building in the area that's even anywhere near that height? I mean, I'm just curious, Visitalis Building, in coast at that point?
The, the house across the street to the peak is probably 32 to 35, 36, something like that, I suspect. I think it's two and a half stories. This is not going to affect any shadows. You know, if, if you, if you go around, I, I know people get nervous about height, and, but if you look at, like, even downtown, Waldboro has four-story buildings. And Halliwell, Maine, which is a beautiful, old historic town, most of the buildings are four stories.
Yeah, but this is a double, that's a gymnasium is one of the stories, so it's, yeah, but Waldboro, it's tall.
But it's sunk, it's sunk, though. The gymnasium's sunk, so, yeah, nine, it's sunk nine feet down.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you don't, yeah, you don't get that height. But it won't, it won't affect any shadows or anything like that. It won't, no, will not put a shadow on anyone's...
Your solar panels?
Huh?
Your solar panels?
They'll be closer to the sun. So I think that's that. And this shows, shows sort of how it is. And, of course, the tax revenue, these, you know, this will bring in, depending on whether, you know, how many units we do, you know, somewhere in the 50,000 to 95,000 in tax revenue for the, for the town. And if we're able to do the other phases and that works out, you know, we're talking maybe up to 300,000 in tax revenue.
Are you jumping to what the other phases are next?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, yeah, this is just showing, this is showing other phases. Some visualization, so. And, of course, we want to build a walking trail around, connect to the walking trail here. We want to connect to the library, if possible. And so these would be, you know, the community would be able to use those.
Are there any other thoughts about the, the roads and traffic, and how it would accommodate that much? I mean, it's kind of a, a little bit on a dead end, so is it, do you put any thought into that?
No, I haven't put in a, a lot of thought. I mean, here, I would be looking at putting in a sidewalk along here, on this side. This would be in front of the school, would be landscaped and private, like patio for people, the units that are there. Most of the traffic will be coming here for the residences and for their offices and even for the phases. The parking would be, you would come in and you'd go this side. And so there wouldn't be a lot of traffic coming down here.
You know, just that people living there, coming and going out of the complex.
Yeah. Like, how many cars coming and going, do you anticipate?
Well, it really depends on the mix of people, whether they're retired, whether they're working, what age they are, and how much they're, they're in and out. And so I've, I've studied traffic, you know, right next to me in Portland, I have an 88-unit condo building. And believe it or, I mean, it's right across the street from me, and believe it or not, you don't even notice anything.
Well, they can walk to work, probably.
No, 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 no. They all, they all drive. They, but you really, there's like a 30-minute period in the morning, and then at night, they all sort of come out at different times. Most of the day, I could lay in the street. It's, it's really not as, as, you know, it's not as busy as you would think, actually. So, you know, like I said, you can't dictate who lives there, so you don't know whether people are going to have two cars or one car. And, and again, it depends on the phase of life that they're in.
Well, how many, what are the total number of units?
Well, in, in this phase, this here, is 21 to 27, probably. So, again, you're, you're going to have somewhere between 20 and 40, you know, 50 cars.
I think I'd like to go back to the parking and traffic, but maybe after we understand what 2 and 3 phases are, because assuming that they are something that might draw cars, we can look at the, maybe we could talk about the whole picture when we get there.
Right.
So maybe if, if, if you can tell us what those are, that would be helpful.
Well, so this is a combination of residential and some office space. And these, but these also, these phases depend upon a lot of different things. And these, but these also, these phases depend upon a lot of different things. So, what I'm telling you now might not be what they end up being. Not that there'll be, I don't think, huge variance, but this could be, you know, a boutique, a small boutique hotel with maybe twenty rooms. And, and again, some office space, might, you know, so, it, it, it depends on some of the stuff that I'm able to work with and who I'm able to get in as tenants, to do things, who's interested. And so that, that is, you know, a little fluid. So, but, but the, one of the thoughts is to, to, is, is thinking about, in this area of mid-coast in Maine, is about the aquaculture, about the agriculture, the food processing, the cul- the, the, the economic cluster around agriculture and aquaculture. And so, I'm thinking about how to build reen- things that reinforce that for this use. And, but like I said, that takes a lot of coordination with people, of who's gonna be interested in, in leasing space, or perhaps even buying condos, you can also cond- minimize office space. So, there could be a lot of different things going on. And here, hopefully, there's not a lot of, for these people, hopefully, do not have a lot of cars and don't drive too much, that a lot of them are walking back and forth, and there's, they're not bringing in a lot of traffic.
Tim, could I interrupt you for a second? So these phase, as you phase the project in, I'm gonna just give you hypothetical, so, and I agree with you that the, the building does have a certain character to it. It looks very robust from the outside. Say you get in there with all your people, and all of a sudden, you find things that maybe you didn't expect, say asbestos, mold, structurally, the, the integrity of it is not as you thought, which could happen, I suppose. How does that affect you moving forward, if you see something that you really did not expect? And you're kinda tied into it, and all of a sudden, you have these three balls you're juggling, how did?
Yeah, the, the, I mean, one, I, we, we, I've been through the building quite a few times.
Right.
You know, the town paid a lot of money to have all the asbestos removed.
Okay.
And so there's been a fair amount of remediation in, in the building. There is some mold, I don't think it's a, it's a big issue, I mean, almost all buildings have mold. So, I don't think it's a big issue, I may find something. But, you know, then you have to just recalculate and see whether you can afford to do it. It may just, you know, it just may be extra cost, but you can absorb them. You may be able to pass some of that on to people buying the units, you may not, but it still may be financially feasible. And of course, I'm not the only, you know, I'll be going for financing, and the banks will have some say. And so, you, you just have to sort of take it as it comes, I mean, that's a renovation project. I think, though, that, that having been through the building, and most of it's, it's pretty open, that we, I think we know, around mold, those types of issues, we are pretty.
Right. I'm gonna just generally push back on the mold thing, as a respiratory therapist for thirty-three years, I've dealt with hundreds of people who has a, have a great sensitivity to mold.
Right.
And to them, it's, it's a big deal, so, I'm just wondering, and it's sometimes that's very hard to eradicate that, so.
Right, right.
Is that something that you go for?
Oh, no, absolutely, we've thought, I mean, there's, I, 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 I read these horror stories and, you know, all the time, and, and of course, for developers, there's lawsuits, you know?
Right.
So, most of the mold is in two places, there's some in the basement, and I think we'll be able to eradicate it, just because of the surfaces, and encapsulate it. And so, I think there'll be, one, we'll try to eradicate it, then we'll also encapsulate it, with materials that, that are more resistant to mold. And secondly, you know, the roof leaked and got some of the insulation wet, and that needs to be removed, and I'm sure there's, I don't know, but I'm sure there's mold in it, you know, it got soaking wet. So, and that's gonna all be removed anyway. And a lot of those materials replaced. So, I, I think we'll be able to, to handle it, but you don't know what you don't know.
Right.
Yeah.
Tim, do you think all the, the rest of, all three buildings will be approximately the same height? And what's, what's the look that it's gonna have?
Well, we haven't, we haven't decided, but it would be, there would be, certainly, it would be related to this, and we'd want it to look in the, you know, in the, in the surrounding area. I mean, brick has gone through the roofing costs in the last two years, and Maine has a big shortage of masons. So, it used to cost, you know, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen dollars a square foot for brick, it's about thirty to thirty-six dollars right now. And they're holding up projects, they're lengthening projects by four or five months. I love brick, I'd love to do it, but I can't even afford to do it in Portland. So I'm not sure I'll be able to afford to do it in Walderboro. Unless, you know, one of the mid-coast masons says, hey, I'll do it cheap, which I don't expect will happen, cause they're so busy. But you don't know, I mean, the, the economy could go down, downturn, and they, or they could say, hey, I'd like the, I'd like to have a brick building there, I'd help you do it. So, you know, it's possible, but, but, you know, I wanna build very attractive buildings, that have some tie to, you know, the local area and the tradition, so.
So the one thing, as you're going along the street there, the other thing I'm thinking about, how does this fit into a residential kind of area? And you were saying that, you know, basically, the front door is gonna be from the, the circle.
Correct.
To all the buildings, so that's kind of turning their back on their neighborhood a little bit, although you're gonna have patios out and doors and whatever on the ground floor. So, there's a little bit of that, and just, you know, thinking about how this is gonna fit into the.
Absolutely.
The neighborhood.
Yeah, so there's, there's, there'll be two front doors for units here. People will enter from here, but yeah, they'll be, they'll be living, and there's big windows, so they'll be light. Of course, there's, there's no neighbors here, but this, if we build this up, it'll also bring use, and it'll, you know, it'll really make for a nice streetscape. And more of a downtown feel a little bit, where there's some, some concentration of people and, and liveliness, you know? So, I think it'll be quite warm and improved, you know, it'll be nice.
And are you saying that the ball field is going? What does that mean, development of new ball field? Are we moving it? What's happening with that?
So, there's a possibility over time, with the town, there's a fifteen-year option to develop that property. But this has to be performed first, so, and then there has to be payment, so that they can be, you know, so the town doesn't need the ball field.
Do you have a plan for where the new ball field would go? Bob?
I'm sorry?
If we had to put in a new ball field somewhere, do we know where it would go?
We've discussed some locations, I mean, there's room over it, for the other schools right now, potentially. That's something we have to figure out.
Is the way you've got it drawn there, that white line, is the ta- is the extent of the shared common space that you've got in this other map? In other words, that ball field is not included in this shared common space, the way you've got it drawn on the other?
Correct, this is remaining as a ball field.
Okay, so the shared common space that's shown in pink here is contiguous with that white line?
Yeah.
See the little building?
Oh, there it is, yep, got it.
Crosses right over.
Okay.
So, and you finally do come to us with a, with a full request. Is it going to be for all three phases, or just for phase one?
It'll, it'll be for phase one. And this is a, an enormous investment, of an intensity that, you know, Walderboro hasn't seen for a long time.
Would you be looking for a commitment on the other phases as well, though, at the same time? Or are we doing one phase at a time in terms of approvals?
Well, I'm looking for, on the variance, I'm looking for commitment, because, because if you're doing this, it works better reinforcing each other, right?
Yep.
And so, you know, you're looking for that commitment. That doesn't mean, you know, like I said, a lot of work has to be done to find people who, who, who have a need and wanna do in Walderboro, and to drive that economic activity. And so, you, you, you know, I want the, the ability, the flexibility to have four stories in these buildings. Whether that comes to fruition or not, that, that takes a lot of work. So.
Right, but I, I think our, our problem would be approving something that we don't know what it is. I don't think we can, I don't.
Well, you're not approving anything.
Okay.
You're saying that, in this area, I can build four stories.
Well, we're, we're accepting.
That's not approving a project, those are two different things.
Well, but you're accepting variances for, for those. Cause I think the other issue that we've already talked about, that Barbara and Sarah both mentioned, which is the parking and the traffic. And that certainly the residents of School Street and around there are gonna be concerned about the parking and the traffic. So, if, if you're, if we're approving a variance for four-story buildings, that could mean.
Yeah, there's parking, right.
But it could mean a lot of, that could cover a wide range of, of car requirements. And, and so I think it would behoove you to have some kind of clarity over what the limits ought to be for these.
Yes, sure, sure.
And some kind of analysis of what the traffic would be like.
Sure, absolutely.
Now, one thing, since I was not a resident in Walderboro at the time when eighty gray was functioning as a school, I have no idea how much traffic that generated.
Right, right.
But if there is a way to get numbers, I mean, I don't know what that looked like, but if we have any numbers on how much traffic that generated, obviously, how many buses per day?
It's a great comparison.
How many people work there? So that you have some numbers, cause, you know, it's the unknown that becomes
Right, right.
difficult, and so the more you can, you can put some comparisons would be, I think would be very helpful.
I'll do that. Yeah.
So what's the legal structure? You basically are getting first options on these other pieces of property? I mean, you'd be coming in with just the eighty gray piece for phase one, but you, is that how it's working?
Yeah, so I mean, you, you're, you're coming in, and this is gonna be a legal entity for that.
But that doesn't have any parking.
And, right, but it would have, it would have, in, in temporary, it'd have rights while before, while these are not developed.
Suppose, so.
So in that plan, I'll come with all, that parking worked out on a temporary basis, because this isn't filled yet with, with parking. So I have to come in and show you exactly where that parking's gonna be. And there'll be, there'll be an agreement between the legal entities for that.
Did you have a comment, Bob? I'm sorry, I saw your hand.
I just wanted to sort of describe the process we're currently going through with this, with the subcommittee. I mean, you've given us some documents to look at, there are actually three of them, one for phase one, one for phase two, and one for phase three. And it may not be how that actually eventually comes out, but I think our thought at this point is to have a separate document for the options. And attached to those documents would be purchase and sale agreements, if the options are exercised. That's not maybe what we initially could have, we haven't even discussed the priorities at this point, but that's kind of the way we're thinking about it. And the options to the field, the options to the field would be connected to completion of the projects in phases one and two, correct, if I'm wrong?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, so that, that stops abuse of just being able to grab land, right? You have to perform, and there has to be a reason to do that.
Well, and also, I mean, you've indicated.
It protects the town.
Pay consideration.
Right, of course, of course, yeah.
Perhaps enough to build another ball field somewhere else.
I would be interested to know the timing of when you let the good folks down there know what's going on. I mean, just to get their input, before everybody gets so much skin in the game, it's hard to turn back.
Well, when you, you're talking about, like, some people already know, like Ted, who's in the community knows. The women who just moved into this building are well aware, I think the gentleman down here is aware. So I think a lot of them understand, know that.
Do they understand the scope of the project, or just that a project is, it possibly brewing?
Uh, I think they all have different levels of understanding.
We have a reporter here tonight.
Yes, I was just gonna say, but Alex is here, so, unless he can't, he can't get it put in his own paper for some reason. So, this, take a sidetrack, but this is a little, it is, there's a lot here. This theater and staff housing, is that phase four, say, phase one point five?
It depends on, I mean, it depends on things that are happening with the theater, and how fast that's moving.
Twenty-twenty, come on!
Right, and spend, and raising money for that. So that, that's gonna have, that's gonna, you know, that's a different funding stream.
Okay.
So I, I, I can't tell you until I, we have some more visibility on exactly what's going on with the theater and the needs, and all of that, how that's gonna work out.
Okay.
So, and, and I mean, we're, again, we're exploring things, the theater will be in the summer, and then there might be, you know, I don't know to the extent of that, what they're gonna do for the rest of the year, how they're gonna keep that building occupied. And the same with this, how do we keep that asset working and not being empty in the winter? And how do we figure out some creative ways to bring in people, and it enriches the community, and brings things, and do we have, you know, do we get some foundation to sponsor some different types of artists, to bring them in, to live there free year-round, that, that maybe four or five artists, they get a year of living there and working, and, you know, maybe they have intersection with the school and at the library and the community in different ways, but also with the theater folks, and it enriches the whole experience. How do you do something so that building gets more use out of it, and is used year-round? Or maybe the theater has camps during different times, and, and they put people. There's a lot to work through on all of this.
So, so the theater and staff housing would not be a revenue stream for taxes?
No, we're just trying to figure out how to house people and make that work. Not make money on it, just how does it make it work, at the lowest cost possible, so it has the greatest chance of success. I think that's the goal, yeah.
And the businesses that you think, the commercial aspect of, well, you talked about phase two, but phase three, what kind of offices would you see being in there?
Well, again, I think something along with the economic cluster around agriculture, aquaculture, you know, perhaps tech. I mean, something that's different, or that's reinforcing for the economic clusters. And there might be, you know, there's so much aquaculture around here, and the state has different scientists, and the universities have different offices that are working with it, and they, this would be a great place for them to have offices, because their field work is right here. You know, so there's a lot of different agencies that I'm gonna be contacting about this type of thing to attract them here. I mean, I'd love to attract, you know, more STEM-type stuff to the community, I mean, it enriches the community, especially if they start to live here, their kids go to school here, you know, it just, it's, there's a lot of benefits to that. So those are the things, the things I'm thinking about. What actually happens, there's a lot of work to be done to do that, and there's, it's, those are long-term, you know, endeavors.
If you reconsider STEM to be steam, then that would.
For the arts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That could be a good tie-in.
Yeah. It is steam, that's it.
That's a good one.
It is.
Stone to steam, adding the arts to the science.
So the other, the other, I think this is more of a neighborhood thing, but also, I mean, in terms of making this attractive, and I know we talked about that, and you're, you wanna make it look nice. There's a, I think there's a gap there, at least from my lack, maybe I'm missing something, but my understanding from a, a planning board approval and a building permit approval, there's a, a large architectural appearance gap in that you could make it look like almost anything that you want. And I know you don't have, you know, you've got a lot of work to do to get some definition on what that looks like, but similar to the parking, of having some kind of vision for us and the town and the neighbors as to what you actually envision the buildings and the site looking like would go a long way to helping people visualize what you're after.
Yes.
So.
And it's one of those chicken and the yanks things.
Yeah, it's more a plea, I.
Whether I can have fifty thousand dollars doing that.
Right, I realize, I realize that. Right, I realize, I realize that conundrum, which is why I sort of, I'm, I'm wishy-washy and asking for.
But you wanna donate $50,000.
Oh, I, I, if I had it, I would love to, but, um.
No, I'm just, there's that chicken and the yens, I mean, there's, there, there is that piece. I mean, obviously, we're gonna put the, the, if we add floors to this, we're gonna have some type of, be at the planning board, you know, but, but, um, then I, I don't know how much work I can have done before we get an idea that we can move forward.
Right.
Because it's a big investment. And so, uh, you know, but there's, 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 there's some things that can be done, you know, to help with that problem. But it's limited because, you know, I just don't wanna flush money down the toilet.
Right.
So.
What is the glass house?
Oh, that's just a visualization. We're talking like, I mean, having something like a solarium or something like, you know, you know, so that you can, people can sit out there and see the gardens and there could be stuff even growing inside and stuff, but for the winter, you know. So that's just, it's an idea about the design.
Okay. Bob, do you have a comment?
I just had a question. Is it in the realm of possibility to offer a variance subject to?
I'm gonna quickly just say the planning board doesn't give the variance that the board feels.
Sorry.
The, the one part, the one part that's planning board may deal with, that Tim was mentioning, is the parking requirement. Because that is, in the book, two parking spaces per unit. So that's.
Actually, that's something we discussed at that last meeting.
Yeah.
We also need the variance and we missed on the variance. So is that a variance or?
It's, it could be a variance. It also could be planning board because what you're offering, because the mixed-use part is could, I could pull up the section.
Why can't you plan for two parking spots per unit?
It depends how you count units. It depends on what the requirement is for office for different uses, which is, is, is different. And then, so when you do the traffic analysis, it also depends on day parts because for different uses, you'll have people coming and going. And so, that one spot may take three or four cars during the day at different times. So you don't wanna build too much park. A parking spot is expensive.
No, I mean, just for phase one, couldn't you plan on?
Oh, well, there'll be room. At this point, there, for phase one, there's room for that.
Right.
But when, but as we build out the phases, there won't be, you know, well, it depends again on, on units and stuff, but.
Well, theoretically, I mean, this, the other possibility, a lot of municipalities have, you know, when you rent a place or get a condo, you have a contract and you only get a sp- one space.
Right.
I mean, theoretically, there's, there's some kind of limitation. Now, it doesn't stop people from having two cars and trying to find a spot, but.
Right, but they have to.
But contractually, contractually, so there, there might be a way to help with that. Just something worth considering. But to Bob's point in general, for things that we do have purview on, we've, we've done plenty of approvals with contingent on X approval or something else. So it's theoretically possible.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I mean, if it's gonna be an appeals board issue, the same principle could apply that they would offer the variance subject to, in this case, your approval of the final design. And he wouldn't break ground until he had final approval or the final design anyway. He would just, we'd get rid of the chicken and egg problem.
Right.
And he would have to meet your standards because that's what the variance is given.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it might, that might take some work, which we'd be willing to do ahead of time on the language. Because if it's just, we have to like the way it looks and you put pillars in it and somebody on the board doesn't like pillars, I'm just saying, you have to be careful of how you phrase that, but you can, you, there's, there should be a way to.
Right. Work through that.
Work through that.
Go ahead, no, go ahead. I was gonna say, and, and just the bigger picture, like a bigger picture guy. So if you get these variances, these investors, well, it'll be more attractive to them because they know that this is not something you gotta haggle about. And therefore, that's kind of gets a momentum.
Right.
The town can win, people can win, you can win. And the best, so is that kind of what you are?
That's what I'm looking at. I do have to have enough assurance that I can represent this to investors properly or, yeah, it'll just be dead water. Yeah.
So, Tim, isn't that little, sorry, isn't that little house landlocked?
No. They have a right of way through here.
So they would continue to have that?
Yeah, they wouldn't affect them at all.
Except during construction.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we'd make sure that they could, you know, we'd keep it open, but yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Um, I think I asked Max about this, but it is kind of an interesting, you know, it's the, it'll be the most dense area in Walderboro.
Yes.
And how does it compare to any other density? I mean, Sprowl Block, I guess, is the next thing. But wouldn't you have to compare density with land circumference? Uh, you might, but I'm just, just bringing it up just to, I mean, this is quite, quite a jump for Walderboro. And I just thought it might be kind of an interesting, do we know what Sprowl Block's density is? I mean, they don't have any land to speak of, the parking lot in that.
Oh, yeah. How many units are in there? That'd be a good number to have. That would be another, in addition to looking at the, the history of the traffic impact of the school.
Right, right.
Is a comparison to what we've already got. Depending on how many apartments in there, the square footage could be pretty small, I would guess. Cause you're right, they don't have, there's no land associated with that.
Well, the first floor is no units on there.
Oh, that's true.
But, anyway.
But it's, it'd just be an interesting reference.
It helps bracket, it helps give you an idea in short.
Yeah. Anything else from the board?
I think Bob has a question.
Yeah, yeah, he's not, I'm going there next.
Sorry.
From the, from the citizenry, in this case, Bob.
I just had a question on parking. How do you accommodate the tendency of people who will be parking there, assuming this really goes forward, parking on the street in front of the houses on School Streets and the adjoining and Apple Street, Gooden Street? Because people will say, oh, there's, there's a place here, this park will walk over.
Yeah.
And I could see that happening. And I don't know whether that's a problem or not, but I, I guess if I were living on one of those streets and found cars in front of my place, I might get a little upset.
Yeah. I, I, it, 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 it depends whether it upset people or not. I mean, in most places, people get to park in front of your place, you know?
Well, that's part of.
You know, and so, but, 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 but again, if that's an issue, the town could say, no parking, you know, or they could make an amendment parking or, you know, and we could educate people when they buy that, you know, that's, you know, that try not to do that.
Everywhere else along Main Street, people park. I mean, it's part of the village. Park everywhere.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you have a question?
With the, I guess it's a little bit related, why I just started thinking about the parking issue and how it's handled within the town and traffic flow. How was the, you know, dummy question, how was the parking and the traffic flow accommodated for the apartments that are going in above the laundromat?
There's no ordinances, our ordinance has no parking requirements for the village. Because.
So there's no parking requirement for this?
This is not, actually not village, this is historic village, what's it, district called?
Oh, okay, historic part.
Slightly different.
Yeah.
So.
Actually, are there parking requirements?
That's gonna be pretty interesting.
For this area?
There are for multi, multi-family dwellings.
No, I mean, from a practical standpoint, I mean, I understand the legal issue there, but from a practical standpoint, what's, where are all those people gonna park?
At, in, at the laundry thing? Well, they do have s- seven spaces supposedly on that property. There's a couple behind and there's some in front, and then there's in front of the street. So, but I don't remember ultimately what the number of apartments were.
They were approved for ten, but I spoke with Chuck Campbell, who was working on the projects. He said it should reduce to two at this point.
Gonna be what?
It's gonna be reduced to two at this time.
Two apartments?
Yes.
In that whole building?
Chip, because he's just focusing on the area above the laundromat.
Oh, okay.
Oh, finishing out the building.
He's not, he's not doing the other portions yet.
Okay.
So, so that'll just be, because if they, because there's no ordinance for parking, it just gonna have to work itself out.
I wanna just jump in with a quick correction. It's not the village district that the parking requirements don't apply to, it is the downtown business district. So, like where the new library bookstore moved into, that's the downtown area, so it doesn't need to meet the parking requirements.
Downtown business district.
I have a question about you, you might be able to help.
Oh, no.
When we put in the new library, there needed to be X number of parking spots available for the square footage. Now, it's, I remember correctly, we built some parking places and the land at the back of the parking lot.
Yep.
Was considered, uh, land for parking. So they didn't all have to be.
Built at that time?
Built, well, yeah, right. And they didn't all have to be marked out as a parking place. That land counted in the.
Square footage stuff?
Right, right. That land without anything on it.
Yep.
Is available for parking. And if you wanted to, you could drive on the grass.
Yep.
We don't need to. But, so when I was looking at this and thinking of parking, there is land there that, if that can count as available for parking.
The first floor parks on the first base, first baseline.
Right.
Penthouse has home. Our first road, rotary.
Yeah, really.
So, I, I, so the question is just, can you not park on the field?
No, I, well, would that land count when you're doing the measurements and the calculations for the number of parking places that the building needs?
If, if I may, it, maybe, you know, it's like, does it have to be paved and lined up?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. For most businesses or low-traffic uses, it's fine to have, or again, depending on the use, it's fine to just have that grass area and you don't have to do it, as long as you're able to say, yeah, X amount of cars could definitely fit there, like, you know, um.
If they had to expand the parking.
Behind Ted's place.
Being, yeah, being able to, being able to not back your car out into the main street is one of the big requirements we have.
Right.
Like my house? Or have to back out into the.
But those would have, but it would have to be, I mean, it would still have to pass DOT muster in terms of accessibility and all that sort of stuff, but yeah.
I was going to say, um, what, the problem with this might be that it's a subdivision. And subdivisions usually have very strict rules.
Okay, have different, different rules.
On how things, whether it's the streets, parking, so that's the one pickup that it might have.
Thank you.
For, by the state, you mean?
By the state.
Any other questions from the audience?
I'd like to make a comment about the parking situation. I know when Family Dollar came in, they came, their first proposal came in with a smaller parking lot, because they said, we really only, we only, only expect to need this size parking. Our ordinances, which might have been based on the state, I don't know, asked for more parking. So they expanded the parking lot and I think, you know, and in a way, it does the business a disservice, because it looks like it's empty all the time. It could look much, much more lively if it had the amount of space it wanted and left the rest as potential to expand their parking lot. They gotta come out with a plan that if they need more parking, this is where it would go. But we forced them to create more parking and it's unattractive. But, um, anyway, so I don't know if we can change that in our ordinance or.
I'm just a, just a comment, and I don't have any real data here, but I live in that neighborhood, bottom of that hill, and I've lived there while it's been a school for many, for a number of decades. And there was a lot of traffic at certain times of day. There were buses and, and School Street, as it goes down towards Fair Hill, there were times in the afternoon where it was all cars and buses. And, and of course, early in the morning when today, parents drive their children to school and the buses go in empty, half empty. But there, there was a lot of traffic then, and then later in the afternoon when school let out. During the day, not so much. And I don't know how many people taught up there, but there was a, you know, the parking lots there was.
Full.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, um, I think other, I think most of the things, you know, I think we understand these, your, your variance requests and we can work out where those variances need to be, need to be approved. And I think just having a better, you know, in terms of presentation, especially for the neighborhood and the town to understand the parking and the traffic. And as much as you can, a visualization of what you expect it to look like, I think those are the main, the main issues that I've captured. Is there anything else that Tim should address going forward that we talked about?
You didn't mention a parking.
I didn't, I thought I said parking. Parking and traffic.
No, I remembered that.
Yeah. Did you, did I mention parking? So, thank you very much.
What do you think your timeframe is? What are you thinking?
Well, uh, right now, a couple of things have to go. I mean, obviously, there has to be some design work done. You can't get, and we're sort of feeling out the interest in this, but I've gotta have some, some of the legal stuff out of the way before I can go and seek investment. And then, in, on a condominium project, banks require so many pre-sales and you can't legally do a pre-sale until you've got a permit from the municipality. Right? Because then you could take their money and that. And so, so, um, so there's a lot of work to be done in certain stages that have to be done. And some of that I need your help with before I can seek that out. But, and then, of course, we don't know exactly what's happening with the economy. I can tell you I'm doing projects in Portland, banks are already starting to require more cash down and more pre-sales because they're worried about what's happening with the economy. So they're already up there what the requirements are. And so, um, all of that will affect timing and availability. But I mean, it's, it's, it's probably a minimum of 24 months at the earliest.
And are these studio two, three-bedroom as a variety of sizes or?
Uh, one, two, and three bedrooms. Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm open to hearing any anecdotal market information that you may possess. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thanks for coming.
I'd like to know what the, the view is from the roof.
We will be knowing our roof in a couple weeks.
Call me.
Take some pictures. Well, take, take a couple snapshots.
I wanna see that view.
Okay. So we have a little bit of other business to go on to as a board.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, thank you very much for coming. I don't have any old business other than minutes. So, in the interest of time and we have the minutes of the July 10th and August 14th, which I've already reviewed and made any changes I had. And so, these should be relatively final unless there's anything that any other board members pick up on, on these. You've been through, most people have been through them.
I wasn't here for August.
And you weren't here for August, so, okay, so we'll, we'll separate the two. So why don't we do July 1st? Can I have a motion to accept the meaning minutes of July 10th as printed?
It's been so long since I read one.
Well, if you read them and you didn't write notes on your copy, then it's probably good.
My motion to accept the eight minutes as written.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favors, all opposed. Now the minutes of August 14th. I'm also fine with those minutes. Any questions or comments on those? Any questions or comments on those? This is the one that, Jim, you missed, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, am I voting, what am I doing?
You want a motion to, motion to approve?
A motion to approve the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sarah seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And Jim is abstaining because he wasn't there, Susan.
Thank you. Do we not have the October meeting, Max?
What's that, October?
Or is that, is that part of your, what you need to talk about with your schedule?
No, my, my schedule thing is after we close. Let's talk about October though.
Right now, I don't have any applicants right now, I don't have anything at all
Okay.
for October, which is good. Just a reminder that October 16th, which is the third Wednesday.
Is the subdivision?
Is the subdivision workshop.
Yep, is that here at 6 o'clock?
I'll be here, 6 o'clock.
Okay.
It is open to any, anyone, we're doing it here because we're probably gonna get some subdivision work at some point in the future. We've got this one tonight as well as an amendment for a subdivision and someone wanting to do a subdivision on Wagner Bridge Road. So that's just all in the works. If I don't have anything, I may.
Excuse me, Wednesday is the 18th in October.
No, it's not.
What am I looking at?
I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which year? Which year?
No, I was.
You're looking at September?
No.
You're looking at September.
I count, I have a calendar here.
Oh, yeah, you're right, sorry, I don't know what I was just looking at.
Okay.
Max, do you require minutes of the October 16th workshop?
Uh, we can do minutes.
No, no.
No, wait, no.
She's asking whether you require them. No, no, no.
I'm excused.
You are excused, yeah.
We'll, we'll record it because it'll, because some towns will probably want what's said to be visually shown, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, if I don't get anything.
Let us know.
Yeah, if I don't get anything for next month, I'll make sure to send the usual email
Okay.
and offer an alternative in case we don't have anything through 9th.
Okay, great.
The October 16th, that will take it?
October 16th, that's happening.
And the 9th is, we have to assume that the 9th, something will come up from the 9th unless it gets canceled.
Gotcha. October 9th.
Great.
Here?
That's here.
6 o'clock?
6 p.m., I'll make sure to send out notices.
Great.
First week of, I'll make sure to send out notices when I'm also updating about the 9th.
Okay. Great. Anything else before we adjourn? And then I have a quick announcement. Nothing? Is there a motion to adjourn?
My motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, so Max will shut us down and I have a.